Hollister City Council and the successor agency to the Hollister Redevelopment Agency. Meeting is now called to order. It is 6:30 PM. Councilmember Perez, can you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
City Attorney, is there any reportable action from closed session?
Nothing to report, Mayor and Council.
Okay, we're going to move on to special orders of the day. We have a certificate of recognition for Alyssa Hernandez. Councilmember Resendez, were you going to present that?
Alyssa, do you want to come up to the podium? All right. First off, I want to thank you for being here and I see that your family's here with you as well. Thank you for coming to support Alyssa. I'm going to present to you a certificate, but before that, I just want to make mention something I read in one of the local papers. It said, and I quote, "There is Hernandez pulling through, the pride of the Hollister Haybailers." I just thought that was so special and I wanted to come and read that quote because I think it's true, Alyssa, what you've accomplished not only makes the Haybailers proud, but the entire city of Hollister. So congratulations and thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read your certificate here. So this is a certificate of recognition from the city of Hollister congratulates Alyssa Hernandez on being selected to play on El Salvador Women's U-17 National Football Team in the prominent Confederation in the Prominent Confederation of North Central America and Caribbean Association Football, U-17 Terminus. So again, congratulations. And we look forward to seeing what else your future has in store for you. So here you go, kiddo.
Thank you.
Thank you. And not to put you on the spot, but you can say a few words if you'd like. It's totally up to you, okay?
(laughing) I just want to say thank you for everybody that's supported me through this journey, and can't wait for what comes next in my future.
Okay, so next, we're going to be doing some presentation of certificates of appreciation for all those that helped out with the Line Street apartment fire. So what I'm going to do is mention each of the organizations, and if you could have a representative come and kind of line up here, we've got a lot of you, so, and then our clerk will be handing out some certificates, and I'll read a little something. So the Christian Worship Center of Hollister, the Community Food Bank of San Benito County, Community Foundation for San Benito County, the County of San Benito for Providing Emergency Housing Options, Farmhouse Cafe, Goodwill Silicon Valley, Hollister Community Outreach and Food Angels, the Hollister Downtown Association, Joe and Flora Koch, Ladies Auxiliary Members, McDonald's, the San Felipe Road location, I think they're unable to attend, but we still wanted to mention, Red Cross, Running Rooster, San Benito County Office of Education, Target, the Women's Club of Hollister, and Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9242. So a couple little bullet points, I just want to talk to you about what transpired with these folks. So we had the incident that happened on January 6th on Line Street. We had 37 residents who were affected by this event. The city hall held a meeting January 7th to discuss needs and resources for recovery. An initial disbursement was given out at that time. A total of $12,820 in gift cards was collected and donated. And then there were, these were distributed to the families. The Community Foundation raised approximately $5,000 in donations from the public and was able to provide an additional support to allocate 500 per individual in each household for a total of $18,500 within 48 hours. And then they've continued to collect for the San Benito Disaster Recovery Fund, and they're open to continue collecting to assist in events like this at any time, so keep that in mind. But thank you to all of these groups, the Christian Worship Center for providing supplies and financial aid, Community Food Bank for providing a coordinated centralized location for donations and dispersments, Community Foundation for collecting monetary donations and providing emergency funds, the County of San Benito helped with the housing options and access to include counseling services, Farmhouse Cafe gave lunch donations to the families, Goodwill Silicon Valley gave donations of gift cards, Hollister Community Outreach and Food Angels provided groceries, household items, and support, Hollister Downtown Association collected items and gift cards to be distributed through the Community Food Bank, Joe and Flora, the property owners of the apartments, worked diligently to assist the residents with their needs, the Ladies Auxiliary Members also gave generous gift card donations, McDonald's provided donated vouchers for each family to receive free meals, and the Red Cross provided unseen support and financial assistance, Running Rooster prepared heartwarming meals, San Benito County Office of Education ensured that children that were affected had the necessary tools to be back at school, Target gave new towels and kitchen supplies, the Women's Club of Hollister gave Target gift cards, and Veterans of Foreign Wars also gave generous gift card donations. This was really a community effort. I was just so proud of how everyone came together and really helped out these families. So thank you, thank you, all of you. I think they did. They're way ahead of you, Rick. Thank you very much. We'll take care of her later.
My whole life-
Do you know her name? Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember.
So thank you all very much, we really appreciate the coordinated effort. I just wanted to add one person, Marcus Barber, the president of the Deputy Sheriff's Association, who donated gifts to the children who lost everything, so we also wanted to thank him for all his work and coordinated effort.
One more. Also Starbucks was, they donated coffee and chocolate to the kids that night. Thank you Starbucks.
So many. All right, and the last thing we're going to do is to proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. I think the clerk is going to hand out the certificate, and I will read it to you. All right. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Hollister and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers, 323 in the chapter, give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, and whereas last year in the Central Coast Chapter, volunteers helped 78 households affected by 57 home fires by addressing their urgent needs like food and lodging, as well as providing recovery support. And now therefore, I'm Mia Casey, Mayor of Hollister, on behalf of the entire city council, do proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month, and I encourage all citizens of Hollister to join in the commitment to strengthen our community and support its humanitarian mission. Would you like to say a few words?
Good. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you very much for celebrating the American Red Cross on March Red Cross Month. I want to introduce you to Camilla. She is Mohammed, she is your Disaster Program Manager for this area, here supporting her and supported her through the Line Street event and subsequent disasters that we have here, so we have a whole team here. Our Red Crossers here, Sal Duran, David Gutierrez, Vanessa Hernandez, and John Crepeau are all regulars here supporting the community. We love the San Benito community and look forward to many more, hopefully not bad incidents because we usually get to meet people on their worst day, but we're here. We're here for the community, not just for the single-family fires, but for preparedness all year round to make sure that this community is well taken care of. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, before we go to public input, I'm just going to give a little script about decorum. I need to address the manner and decorum of our meetings and issue a warning in this regard. Meetings must be in an orderly and efficient manner without willful disruptions so that the business of the city can be conducted. While the council is more than willing to listen to comments from the public, it must be done at the appropriate time and should be done up at the podium with the microphone so that your words can be heard and recorded properly. There cannot be interruptions when council members are speaking or audience members calling names, chanting, or yelling out. If you do so, a warning will be issued, and if behavior continues, you might be asked to leave the chambers. If there's too much disruption from audience, depending on the severity, it may be necessary to call a recess, clear chambers, or even cancel the meeting. I'd like to ask for your courtesy and cooperation in this regard, so it won't be necessary to take any of these steps. Thank you. Now, let's go on to public input. Prior to taking public comment, I want to announce that the public notices regarding the Eden Housing Density Bonus Application and West Fairview Development Agreement had a typo and will be re-noticed for the March 18th council meeting. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on an item that's not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining via Zoom using a cellphone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any items not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, Mayor Casey, the first speaker is Ruth Erickson.
First, I would like to thank you for letting me speak. I called all the city council members, and the only person that called me back was Roland. Thank you, Roland. It was concerning AT&amp;T requesting from the CPUC to take away landlines from Hollister. And many people are needing their landlines as their lifelines. During emergencies and after emergencies, many people cannot use their cellphones, also because of the topography where they live. They can use a landline, but not a cellphone. They can use a cellphone when they leave home. Boards of Supervisors and city councils all around California have written letters to the CPUC to ask them, to request them, please do not allow AT&amp;T to take away the landlines. So I gave, I left for Roland the letter, he's got a packet there, the letter and some newspaper articles, so if you want to read them, he has them. I also wanted to invite, on a lighter note, the Friends of the Library, we have one library here, Friends of the Library are having a fundraiser on March 24th at the Elks Lodge. You can get your tickets, if you wish, online. I have flyers, if anybody wants a little flyer, and we hope you can all attend because we are trying to build onto the library to expand it. As you probably know, the library was built in 1960 when the community was very small. We are bulging at the seams, we have no room to put a lot of things, we've had to get rid of a lot of things, so now we are trying to raise funds so that when the expansion is done, we can fill the rooms with whatever is needed. So please, buy tickets. I also, since I have a little bit of time, want to just thank you for approving a new airport sign, because for about over three years, I have been nagging everybody about this. We didn't have a sign for a long time because it was knocked down on, what's the name of the road? Anyway, so now we're going to get a new sign. Thank you, it looks good. Thank you very much.
The next public speaker is Flora Koch.
Good evening, Mayor Casey, City Manager David Monroe, city council members, Hollister Services, and of course Hollister Community. I think a lot of them have left, but we, I want to thank you, number one, for the opportunity to come to the podium tonight. My name is Flora Koch, my husband Joe Koch. We are the owners of the two fourplexes on Line Street, as we talked about, and you definitely honored a great amount of people. We all happened on January 6th, Saturday, as you said, 37 residents were affected, and thank God, everybody got out. This was something we have never experienced in our whole life, and we want to say how amazed we were of the prompt support and outreach of Hollister and services and the Hollister community. We've never seen anything like that. Hollister, I believe, is a testament of how communities come together in crisis, and you are definitely an example of that. We want to express our gratitude, not everybody is here or was here, but the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Red Cross, the Food Bank, the Hollister officials here, the Hollister community, and thank you, David, most of all, too, in organizing, being there from the point on to still today, and assisting everybody. We again want to thank you for everything you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are all the public speakers for public comment.
All right, we're going to move on then to the consent agenda. Do any members of council have any brief questions or comments from the consent agenda? Councilmember Resendas, any?
I don't have any questions or comments, but I'd like to pull item A7, please.
Any councilmember, Burns, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Press, no? Seven, yeah. Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item A7?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And Mayor Casey, do you want to state for the record, there are no public comments for the agenda items? The consent agenda items.
Okay, sorry. All right, so then let's move to item seven, the resolution of the city council of the city of Hollister approving $20,000 to the San Benito Leadership Institute. Did you want to take that, City Manager?
Absolutely, thank you. So yes, Vice Mayor Resendas, this item, we had brought a presentation to you about a month ago, or the January 16th meeting, three meetings ago, regarding the San Benito Leadership Institute. They spoke of their proposed 12-month program, which was designed to build diverse leaders in the community. By consensus, we were directed to return with an agenda item to allocate $20,000 of general fund to support the development of this program. So we're bringing this back today for discussion, and if approved, then we would go forward with issuing payment to this organization. We do have Brenda Weatherly here in the audience this evening, if there are questions of her as well, as the coordinator of the program.
Councilmember Resendas, did you have a question or comment?
No questions, but comments whenever they're allowed.
Okay, and we don't have any public comment for this item, is that correct? No public comments for this item.
Okay, so Councilmember Resendas, did you want to?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I had to pull the item to state my position. I think I made it very clearly about not wanting to spend $20,000 to start up this, so I just wanted to pull it, and then that way I can vote no on it when it's time to vote, so.
Any other comments? Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'm 100% in support of it, of course, but I'd also like to have some check-ins at some point to hear their progress, so potentially maybe twice a year to just see because I'm not convinced that we're done at this point, and I really think we've seen the benefit of leadership as recently as this evening in the recognition. And so for me, I think it's money well spent, and I have an appetite for more if there's a need for more. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Morales?
No. No, I'm also in full support. I'd just like to ask if the leadership team would consider incorporating government alliance in race inequity to normalize the conversations and really take a deep dive how government impacted in a lot of different ways through policy and their role in terms of institutional racism. And thank you for the work, we appreciate it.
I don't have much to add except that I support the project. I've seen some of the leaders that have come out of the earlier leadership projects, so I think it's a great thing. So if there are no more comments, then let's go ahead and take a vote. Can I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries four to one. All right. Let's move on to our first public hearing. Resolution number 2024-31, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hollister denying appeal 2023-2 and upholding the planning commission denial of conditional use permit 2023-3 to install a CNG fueling facility for exclusive use by Star concrete vehicles operating on the adjacent Star batch plant and material supply facility located north of Gibbs Road. operating on the adjacent Star Batch Plant and Material Supply Facility located north of Gibbs Road within the M1 Light Industrial Zoning District. Can we get a staff report?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am presenting an appeal of the Planning Commission Action twenty twenty-three dash two. That appellant is Opel Fuels. On August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the Planning Commission held a hearing to consider a conditional use permit twenty twenty-three dash three, seeking approval to construct a private compressed natural gas fueling facility. The Planning Commission voted five to zero to deny the conditional use permit because required findings could not be made. The conditional use permit requires five findings to be made, which includes compliance with the zoning district in which the project is located, compliance with the general plan, approval or compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, that the location, size, design, and operation, operating characteristics of the project are compliant with the existing and future land use, and that the proposed use would not impair architectural integrity or the character of the district in which it is located. The project, as it was presented, was presented as an accessory use to a legal non-conforming use located at one five one Hillcrest Road, also known as San Benito Rockery. This map shows where San Benito Rockery is located. It's outlined in red. It's on five one, one five one Hillcrest. The proposed project is on the southern portion, and it's outlined in aqua color. And this shows the current zoning for both sites. The existing legal non-conforming use of San Benito Rockery is located within the neighborhood mixed-use zoning, and the proposed is located within the industrial zoning. The appellant presented the grounds for appeal and stated that it was separate from what they currently have at one five one Hillcrest, that it's a separate operation and that it would have its own access off of Gibbs Road. However, based on the plans that they submitted, that is inaccurate. The proposed site, the proposed project site is outlined in a light blue color, and the existing San Benito Rockery is in a darker blue, and the circle shows where they listed their primary access, which is through San Benito Rockery, through the proposed project, which in a sense, they are expanding the legal non-conforming use. They also have, the existing site is being occupied by materials and vehicles that are not permitted. They do not hold entitlements for that, and as you can see, the entire site is being occupied with that. These are pictures of the existing site. There are concerns with the driveway length and width. As you can see, the materials are being stored there, and there's vehicles as well. They have some landscaping, but it's very minimal. And this is a screenshot of the plans they submitted. The site currently has one percent acreage. The zoning district requires a ten percent minimum landscape. They're proposing to increase it to two point three percent, which is very minimal. And that's an additional photo of the existing landscaping. During our analysis, we found that we could not make the findings as required in the conditional use permit because it is not, it's not consistent with the general plan. Section seventeen point two four point two two zero D two states that no non-conforming use of land should be enlarged, increased, or expanded, sorry, extended to occupy a greater area of land than was occupied when it became non-conforming. It's also not complying with the zoning district because it doesn't comply with the access, with the landscaping, and because they have storage of non-permitted vehicles and materials. And it's also exempt from CEQA because CEQA, section one five two seven zero exempts any project that a public agency rejects or disapproves. The applicant was notified that they could modify their conditional use permit and making compliant with the landscaping, with the driveway access, and any other improvements because the industrial zoning does allow a standalone service station. However, they opted to move forward with our, knowing that we were recommend denial when going to the planning commission. They chose not to make the modifications, and here we are today. Again, the applicant is welcome to submit a new conditional use permit as long as it's complying with the general plan and the zoning requirements. We do want to make them aware, and we've made them aware, that it will be subject to CEQA because unfortunately, they do not meet the infill development exemption because the parcel is more than five acres. So our recommendation is for, well, the council has two options. One is to adopt the resolution denying appeal of the Planning Commission Action twenty twenty-three dash two and uphold the Planning Commission's denial of CUP twenty twenty-three dash three, subject to the findings contained within the resolution. Or option two, to continue the hearing and direct staff to provide additional information or clarification. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, Opel Fuels Vice President Scott Nelson, is available via Zoom, I believe. And Mike Welch is the representative, and he should be here in person to address any questions, yeah.
Okay, do we have questions? Councilmember Resendas, any questions?
Yes. Thank you. So I think I heard you say it during your presentation, but just so I'm correct, the planning, I'm sorry, the staff recommendation to a planning commission was to deny the project?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. And it was a five oh vote?
Yes.
Okay. It seems like they were told, you were told that they were not going to use that entrance, but that's what they submitted on their original plans?
Yeah, that they were going to enter through San Benito Rockery as their primary access, yes.
Okay. So we were here last meeting. There was three of us here. Two of the councilmembers were out. And this item was polled. Why was it polled?
The applicant was not here, and they requested a continuance.
But the applicant was here?
No.
So Victor Gomez? Yeah, I'm just curious, because I saw you here. Well, I'm curious, and I think I do have the right to ask why it was polled and why it's, yeah. Because I thought the applicant was here. I actually saw a couple of people here that night, so.
Is there any problem with that, City Attorney?
I don't have any problem with it, but if you want to capture it as part of the public hearing, maybe wait until you open the public hearing, otherwise it's not part of the official record.
Why do we do that?
Sure.
Speak at that time?
Yeah, when you do come up here, Mr. Gomez, I just think that the public should know why it was polled when it was agendized, and the staff wasn't given any notice of that until the meeting began, when there was only three of us here. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I do have a couple. You talked about how some of the property currently is not in compliance with the conditional use permit? As far as you talked about vehicles and other things?
Right, currently sourced materials and vehicles, those are not, they do not have entitlement to do that.
Okay, and so do we have an open code enforcement action on the property?
I believe we do, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to-
I'm sorry, I, okay.
Okay. I'd like to know more about that. You know, it's one thing if we do, in my mind, it's a different thing if we do not. And so, did I hear you correctly say that if they wanted to do a commercial gas station, that that would be an allowed use?
It doesn't necessarily have to be a commercial. They could do standalone service station and let it be for that use. But the issue was that they were accessing it through a legal non-conforming use. If they brought it back to staff and proposed entry through Gibbs and Met Landscape and the additional improvement, yes, they can definitely move forward with that.
So there is a path forward, is what I'm hearing you say. And so, and it wouldn't require that it be a retail establishment. As I read the staff report, my recollection is it's something that they want for their use only and specifically for their company.
Yeah, and they can do that, just, like I said, the issue was the access and not meeting the other requirements.
Okay, and so, and that's been shared with them, that there is a path forward?
Multiple times.
There is a way to get to, yes?
Yes, sir, multiple times.
Okay, and so, also, did I hear, or was it referenced, that maybe there could be a general plan amendment request for this as well to make this path forward for them if they want to pursue it on this level?
I mean, I guess they wouldn't need a general plan because it isn't allowed use, and that it's so an industrial, so they could have a standalone service station. It's zoned for that, just a conditional use permit as long as they meet the intent of the general plan and the zoning district.
Okay, those are all the only questions I have for now. Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Perez, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of why they wouldn't just look down the alternate pathway. Can you answer that?
When we get to public hearing, they'll probably mention that, but. No, I don't think I have any questions. I think they've been answered. So I think what I'll do is open the public hearing on this item. And I take it we have public comments. Did we want to start with?
Yes, Mayor Casey, the first speaker is Victor Gomez.
Okay, there we go.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, pleasure to be with you this afternoon, this evening. First to answer your question, councilmember, regarding the attendance, it was my fault. I didn't ask Opel Fuels to be available to answer questions. I'm not a CNG specialist, so that's why I think it's important to have them. And I asked staff at that time, when I found out of my blender, if they could, if you could move the hearing to today. And as you can tell, we have Opel Fuels available to answer any questions. And to answer your questions, councilmember Burns, easier said than done. So essentially what, we never asked for residential designation on Star Concrete and San Benito Rockery's site. Nobody requested that. So in two thousand and seven, when the general plan was kids walking to and from school, what we said is, we'll just use our easement, our overlap on the parcels to get through. We'd be happy to come back to you at some point, whenever your new general plan is adopted, and do a general plan amendment. That was actually the question you were asking, councilmember Burns, was not on the exist, not on the industrial parcel, you're asking about the current operation. And the answer is yes. We would come back with a general plan amendment, if you so desire, to keep it. We don't want to go anywhere. And again, it's pointless for us to load up a truck and then drive all the way around and fuel up when we could actually just cut through, right through our parcel and not incur any kind of traffic around the area, so on and so forth. So we understand staff's position. The zoning code is clear. It's black and white. We understand that. But again, we never asked for it. We've always been there. We have a majority of our employees that actually live in Hollister. We, if we don't have this fueling facility right next door and we end up going somewhere else, it's one less reason for us to be here in the community. We're trying to provide clean air. We're trying to adopt these new state regulations-
Mayor, if I could jump in here real quick. So, Mr. Gomez, are you representing the appellants in this matter?
I am.
So you're the primary speaker?
Correct.
So for due process concerns, I recommend that you let him finish his presentation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm pretty much done. So essentially, what we're asking for is a denial of the resolution, uphold our appeal. We'd be happy to go back and work with planning staff and increase the landscaping and put it behind the sound wall. I don't know why anybody wants to grasp behind the sound wall that you can't see. We'd be happy to do that, if you request us to do that. We'd be happy to come back and do a general plan amendment on the current site, if we need to, if you would like us to do that at a future date. And in addition to that, I think staff's biggest concern is a standalone operation. We, we will never use that facility, that CNG facility, if we do not operate at the neighboring site. So if San Benito Rockery and Star Concrete is not operating, we really have no use for the CNG facility, right? So why would we even do a standalone application when we're using it for the operation that's right next door? Again, totally understand that we are technically non-conforming, but we're non-conforming because we were given a residential designation. I don't know how many people, look, you guys all know I'm in the development industry. I don't know anybody that's clamoring at me, saying, hey, Victor, can we build five hundred apartments on top of a concrete facility? No, nobody's asking for that right now, okay? So what we're asking for, again, if you want to make it contingent and say, hey, Victor, you guys could operate this CNG facility as long as you're operating and make that facility contingent upon our operations, we would be more than, more than happy to do that. So happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Do we have other public comment?
There are no public speakers for this item.
Do we have further, do you have further discussion?
Thank you. So I appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions. Thank you for that. And I didn't know you're in the development industry. Thanks for pointing that out. I didn't know that also, by the way, that that land was designated high density. Is that true? And was it because of the rationale that the speaker had said?
Councilmember Resendas, I can't speak to the rationale, but the Star Concrete Facility is currently designated neighborhood, well, it's designated-
Give me a moment. I've got a closed public hearing. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Residential and residential mixed-use zoning, and the accompanying zoning district is neighborhood mixed-use, which is kind of a one-to-one of our mixed-use. So that is the designation that was given in the two thousand and five general plan and the zoning that was given in two thousand and eight when the zoning was adopted.
And it sounds like you all made some recommendations to the applicant. So what, what do you recommend? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Ms. Kelly, but what do you recommend moving forward so that we can get to an approval?
Well, our recommendation tonight is a denial of the appeal because staff and the planning commission believe the findings to approve a conditional use permit at the site cannot be made as to an approval, as Magda mentioned in her presentation. The issue at hand is an expansion of a non-conforming use. So that rockery and the way that non-conforming uses work is that they can exist. They're fine to exist. They can actually be replaced. So if perhaps the rockery went away and a similar rockery cement kind of operation came in, they are actually allowed to do that. There is a six-month window in which things can be replaced. For example, if you had a restaurant that might have been in a non-conforming, and then another restaurant wanted to come in in its place after that business moved on, as long as it's done within a one hundred and eighty-day timeframe, that restaurant can come and the non-conforming use can continue. The issue at hand is the expansion. So that is, that's where the issue is coming, from that expansion of a non-conforming use. Now, because the site that's located off of Gibbs, the site in question where the conditional use permit is, is actually zoned industrial, a conditional use permit can allow for a service station. So there is a path forward to develop that site, if you will, into a conforming use, which in industrial, a service station is conforming. In fact, the operations that they have is more of an industrial use, so potentially a development proposal to do kind of the concrete. I know it seems a little counterintuitive, just to move it next door, but the site that is proposed for development, in this case, is an industrial site. So they would need to bring it into conformance with industrial requirements.
Okay, so just so we're clear, it's those five points that you pointed out that considered the project, or that made you decide that you're going to recommend for us not to approve it? And if they do want to move forward, then they, your recommendation would be for us to deny it, but then for them to apply the other path forward that you had suggested?
Yes, they're welcome to apply for a development proposal or an application with a conforming use for consideration.
Okay, sounds clear to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, ma'am. So I'm a little flustered. It seems like we're creating more obstacles than we need to. I understand why staff has chosen the path they have, but- I understand why staff has chosen the path they have, but it seems to me in the last month or so, when we were talking about even the general plan update, that we were talking about, well, actually, I think it was the housing issue that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, where we were talking about upzoning some properties downtown, and this council expressed some concern about the fact that not necessarily would people be made aware of it. And so I'm concerned that we can't speak to two thousand and seven and what did or didn't happen then, but it certainly sounds like the property owner was not advocating for it. Um, I don't know if they opposed it at the time, but as I understand it, the, the applicant actually owns the parcel they're advocating to put the, uh, CNG, uh, fueling stations on. And it, it makes sense to me based on the fact that they can do it just u- utilizing their properties and not have to put these heavy trucks out, move them around, create more obstacles, uh, more risk. And, and I like the idea of, uh, maybe some sort of a deed restriction, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna support to uphold the appeal of the applicant in this situation, and, um, yeah, I, I think I'll be quiet at that point, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
So, someone said something about the entrance would be to the CNG place would be on Gibbs? Did someone say Gibbs?
Uh, yes, so the property, and if we could pull up, I can show the map that Magda had in her presentation again, but, um, the, the property is off of Gibbs, so, um, the, the current proposal is to have a shared access point between the two properties. Uh, take me back to, I can, I got it. So, the blue site is where Star Concrete is currently located. The rockery is currently located off of Hillcrest on the north there. And then the property in question is outlined in red in the gray. Um, and the connection point between the two properties there in the center is where they'll share or propose to share a driveway. Um, they currently have a driveway, um, because they're kind of using this as a non-conforming outdoor space in addition to their non-conforming use in the neighborhood mixed-use. Um, but in order to comply with our code requirements, the access for two four nine, what's labeled two four nine, uh, Gibbs would need to come off of Gibbs. And there's a significant amount of frontage there, there, it's wide enough, the property is, to have a compliant driveway for industrial requirements as well as spacing between the other driveways. And I believe there's a photo, um, this photo. Back one, yeah. Um, so, uh, what I was gonna say about the driveway is that the property, if you're looking just immediately to the left, to the west of this property, there's a, there's a kind of a triangular property, I'll back up a couple just so you can see it again.
Nine oh one?
Yeah, nine oh one, so that orange is kind of a triangular property, and then you can see it here in this street view. That nine oh one, this is Gibbs Drive, so we're actually right in front of the new satellite healthcare building looking north. Um, this driveway is the access point for that small triangle, um, and it's proposed to be shared or possibly currently shared, this gate is a little hard to tell if it's actually actively used or not. But there is a distance requirement, um, for separating from this driveway on the neighboring property and moving a driveway further to the east along Gibbs, and there's plenty of room for that to make a conforming driveway access point for this property.
So I, I, I totally support staff, I'm always, I really want to support staff. I just don't understand this, um, it, to me, it's, it's, I think that the city working together with developers, we can come up with a solution to get a, a throughway or whatever you guys do, and to have another exit out there too, if need be, because you're gonna need it for fire anyways. I'd like to see the staff and, uh, Opal get together again. However, that is.
Councilmember Morales?
I, I would, um, I would agree with councilmember Perez in that it, it sounds from like reading the report, there's, um, like the path of, of getting where we want to go, i- it sounds like from what we heard today that it makes sense to, um, uphold the appeal because of the, because of the benefits, because of the outcomes. But is there something that, I mean, other than the, what you've already shared in terms of the general plan and, um, that kind of would not, is there anything else that would, that you can point to to say like, here's other things that you need to consider?
Uh, yes, so I would point you to, and I don't remember which direction is, looks like it's this direction. Um, the section seventeen twenty-two, um, twenty-four two-two-zero, this is our non-conforming use section of the zoning ordinance. And it just clearly states that no non-conforming use of land shall be enlarged, increased, or extended to occupy a greater area of land than was occupied when it became non-conforming. So this is kind of the sticking point of where, um, we cannot find that it is compliant with the zoning ordinance because expanding and building a new service station on a property for the San Benito Rockery, um, as that use and expanding onto this site. Um, staff and the planning commission could not find the project in compliance with this section in particular, as well as the other sections that have more to do with development standards such as the landscaping and access. But this expansion of the non-conforming use of land is the real sticking point where if it is not a standalone service station, staff and the planning commission could not find compliance with this section of the code. So I would ask if it is the council's desire to potentially uphold the appeal, and that's why, um, your recommendation was, just to continue, we would ask the council to provide and make the findings for approving this conditional use permit, and we'll return to you with a resolution.
Do you have any other? Oh, boy. I'm kind of of two minds, because on the one hand, I respect our planning department and the planning commission. Um, I think they have a lot more knowledge even than we all do about planning. Um, and I am a big fan of following and being in compliance. But I also understand my colleagues' point of view, which is, how do we get to yes? And how do we, you know, we want to keep our businesses here, we want to keep them growing and expanding, and so it sounds like we've got a dilemma, and I'm not sure the path forward. One question that just came to mind is, is there any reason you couldn't develop that other piece of property, have the entrance on Gibbs, and then when we get the general plan done, they could do the amendment and have an entrance, a dual entrance, make that entrance the other way? Is there, is that something that could be done?
I mean, standalone development conditional use permit can be considered, certainly with access on Gibbs, and we would look at all the other requirements of our zoning ordinance. If it was the council's direction to do a general plan amendment, that would be the council's direction.
But I mean, that would be at a later date, but I mean, for a period of time, they could at least still have their fueling station, but then they could apply for a general plan amendment once we're done with our general plan to, and they could, in theory, add that driveway in if they wanted to, if they got.
So do standalone and then in the future modify?
Is that something that could be done, or?
I, I think technically, yes, the general plan. It, it, it's, I, I'll not speak to desirable, I was just speaking to complicated, uh, thinking of complication, but yeah, I, I mean, if, if the rockery at some point through whatever means uh, became a conforming use, then you would not be looking at expanding non-conforming use.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the only other thing is, this has been in place, this non-conforming use has been in place since two thousand and seven, and why wasn't it ever challenged, or why wasn't there ever an amendment done in all these years? Um, now we're sort of in this place of limbo with the general plan where we aren't doing amendments, so it, it just really presents a problem. So I'm, um, torn, I, I, you said the option we would have is to do a conditional use permit, or?
Yes, so the, um, what's before you tonight is an appeal of the planning commission's denial, so um, the council could uphold the appeal or uphold the planning commission's decision and deny the appeal. Those findings have been made and recommended to you in the draft resolution. However, if it was the council's desire to uphold the appeal and overturn all or part of the planning commission's recommendation and resolution with findings and conditions of approval, um, well, there are no conditions of approval, um, because the recommendation was denial from the planning commission, so what the council would be considering is approving the conditional use permit. So, we would have to make, um, it is a requirement of the zoning ordinance as well as kind of development law to make findings when you are approving a development project. So these are the five findings in our zoning ordinance seventeen twenty-four two-hundred that are required to be made in order to approve a conditional use permit. And the council would also need to be considering any conditions of approval that they would like to place on the conditional use permit. And so that's something, um, I, we can help you with, um, tonight, but those would need to be coming from the council in your motion. And what we would do is we'd take, because it's gonna be complicated, we'd take your motion and then we'd write that resolution and bring this back to you in order for you to actually review a resolution that proposes your findings and your conditions of approval for the project.
I don't know, is, see, uh, uh, do you want to hear from Mr. Gomez? Okay, please.
I promise I'm just trying to make your job easier.
That would be helpful.
So I, I think, I think the interpretation of a non-conforming use is, um, kind of being sort of loosely used. I understand technically why it's being described that way, but we are not expanding a non-conforming use. The use of a CNG fueling station at, on the industrial parcel is allowed. Is allowed, so we're not actually expanding the non-conforming use. It's a use for that operation, but it's consistent with the zoning, right? And so, I would propose that actually, pretty easily, number one, is the proposed use is conditionally allowed within the subject zoning district and complies with all of the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance. That's the finding that I would make tonight if I was the council, because it is consistent with the zoning in the industrial spot. Now, if we were coming in and saying we were gonna put the CNG facility on our existing parcel, then, yeah, it's non-conforming, right? It doesn't conform with the existing land use in that area of mixed-use. Uh, but again, I would argue that this is not an expansion of a non-conforming use, um, that this is a use allowed in the industrial zoning. So, again, I'm just trying to make your, your job a little bit easier tonight to help us uphold the appeal. And again, we appreciate staff, we appreciate, we understand why they're interpreting it this way, but sometimes, uh, law and logic don't necessarily combine, and that's certainly, I think, the case here tonight. I think that's why you're having a difficult, you know, sort of, uh, uh, time trying to identify the trajectory or what's coming next. But again, I would, my interpretation would be it's not an expansion of a non-conforming use because the use is allowed in the industrial zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have further comment, or does anyone want to? Yes.
If I may just add one thing to that, the, the use is certainly of question, but there are also the other issues of the zoning ordinance, as pointed out in your staff report with regard to landscaping, access, um, parking, those types of things that, um, as proposed, this site plan does not provide any of those information. So, in order to make the finding of compliance with the zoning ordinance, the council will need to bear in mind that they're also finding the proposal in compliance with all of the zoning ordinance.
So.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, what's your motion, sir?
I'm gonna move that we uphold the planning commission's decision to deny the conditional use permit for resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Do I have a second on that? Notion fails for lack of second. Uh, do we have another motion?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
So, I, I would like to make a motion to uphold the appeal and to, um, have staff work with the applicant as it relates to the, uh, other issues that need to be resolved to move this thing forward. I, I, I do have concerns about the landscaping, I like the idea, uh, maybe not specifically the applicant's words, but my interpretation of the words that perhaps we put some sort of a deed restriction on the property so that if it were to change use or ownership, that these things, uh, would go away. I, I, to me, it just makes sense, and, and I want to keep a, a long-established business here in town. And, um, I think we need to find a way to get to yes, and so, um, I, I, I know that this planning staff has that capability, if they have the direction from the council to move it in that direction, so that'd be my motion.
That's a really long motion.
Yeah, and to, and to be clear, the motion isn't approving a CUP tonight. It's just saying, we're not gonna uphold planning commission's
Correct.
ruling.
Right.
Staff, go back and work with the developer.
Correct.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all those in post?
No.
Okay, motion carries for one. Okay, um, being on to item two, ordinance number twelve forty-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hollister, amending section two-point-oh-four, point-oh-five-oh of the chapter two-point-oh-four of title two of the Hollister municipal code. City attorney?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council, so at the December eighteen, twenty-twenty-three council meeting, council, um, by majority requested a future agenda item, the staff report indicates nine AM, um, moving the start time to nine AM. However, council directed that the start time be four PM. And so that is actually what the ordinance amendment reflects, the date would still be the same. The meetings would start at four PM and not go past ten PM, um, unless that meeting is extended by the city council. And this, before you tonight, is actually the introduction of this ordinance. If you recall, we need to bring it back for a second adoption, and then thirty days after that, it would become effective.
Okay, do we have questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Resendas, any questions? No? Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just sort of clarification too, um, it seemed to me there was conversation about how uh, we currently go directly into closed session if there's a closed session, however, if we move to this format, we could do closed session at any time during the meeting, or perhaps at the end of the meeting, and we'd still have that option as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to clarify, thank you, Mayor.
So we could have closed session at any time anyways, correct? Pretty much, or is it just in that format?
Correct, it, it's not with the format, you can go into closed session, we could change it to the end with your current.
Now, I just, the, um, the other thing is, I'm still for nine o'clock. I think that anything we come up with is ridiculous. Why even change it if we're?
Madam Mayor.
I'm talking.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, sir?
I thought we were asking questions at this point.
Do you have a question, you can, we'll have more deliberation, you can discuss the item. Any question about it?
So, can David, how much staff time is, is done on a Monday? From just a, a department head's standpoint? Can you tell, run me through their day just real quick?
Well, typically, a department head would start, let's call it eight o'clock.
Uh huh.
And so, however long the meeting runs.
That's in the morning, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And how many department heads do we have?
When fully staffed, we have twelve.
Cool. I, I, I think it is an injustice to have our employees do that, thank you.
Again, Madam Mayor.
I'm done.
He's done, please.
Thank you.
Councilmember Morales, any questions?
I guess the, my question, it could be either a question or a statement, is to ask the council to consider changing it to Tuesday at four PM.
Okay, we'll have deliberation, but let's, um, if there's, I don't have any questions at this time. Well, actually, I do have one for the city attorney. So if we do a four PM start time, we can't have closed sessions starting at four PM, or would that?
You can have it start at any time, you could have it, you could do a special meeting like you do now and have it start at three. Um, three-thirty, four, it, it's really up to council their preference.
Gotcha, just wanted to double-check that. All right, so let's, uh, open the public hearing on this. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay, so then let's have some discussion, uh, councilmember Resendas, you want to start?
Can you close the public hearing, Mayor?
Oh, sorry, closing the public hearing, every time, right? Councilmember Resendas, do you have any statements or comments?
Thank you, I do. Um, so, if we're gonna talk about injustice, I think that the only reason that this is being put on the agenda is because certain members of the council do not like being criticized by the public, and there is a current movement to shut the public out from participating in democracy within our city. That, to me, is a major injustice. The city has a huge problem with engaging, educating, and activating the public. We should be looking at creative means on how to get them here and get them here. We should be looking at creative means on how to get them here and get them their information. But as far as changing the time to be more convenient um for a community that is filled with commuters, I think that's a bit of an injustice, if you ask me. Um, so I don't support moving the time. There are many other things that we can do, such as having special meetings, such as engaging the public in different ways to come out to meetings. Um, but at this time, we should not be moving the time of the meetings at nine AM, four PM, or anything. And another thing that we should be doing is, a lot of the questions that we have um can be minimized if we ask those questions ahead of time. I've made mention of that as well. So we need to get our questions answered before we come here. We need to come do the people's business at a time that they can come and participate in democracy, and then we need to leave at a time where it's not going to inconvenience them as well. There's a lot more things that we can do to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I'm fine with either Monday at four or Tuesday at four. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez, do you want to make your statement?
Yeah, it's funny, you know what? We talk about trying to do, or you talk about trying to do different things, and yet we're trying to do it during the daytime, like the um board of supervisors. You know how many people they have in there? I don't know if you've ever been to a board of supervisors meeting, but they have a packed room. So yours, I I agree with you, Roland. We should do try something different, and we should try it during the day where it's gonna benefit the people and the employees and the council, not just one person that doesn't even pay attention to the rules.
Councilmember Morales?
No, I um, like I said, just wanna prefer if we're gonna do it after four, at four, rather do it on a Tuesday.
Okay, so I understand why this was proposed, and I don't think it has anything to do with shutting anyone out. I think that's, it's kind of a bold statement. I I realize that some of our meetings have gone on till all hours of the morning and early morning, and some folks do have to get up very early and commute out of this area. Uh, for myself, particularly when it goes after ten PM, it becomes harder and harder to make good decisions. And for me, that's why we're here, is to make good decisions. So um I don't like the statement that somehow we're trying not to engage people. I just don't think that's true at all. And I do see um board of supervisors meetings, and they do have plenty of folks showing up when it's important to them and there's a topic that matters. So um I'm not opposed to any of the options, uh, you know, um, there was a suggestion of moving it to Tuesdays that that might work better, four PM. Personally, I would prefer that. I don't like when we have Monday uh holidays and we have to have meetings on Tuesdays, and it totally messes up my week. I I always get confused about that. So um I'd be for moving it to Tuesday at four PM. I think trying something earlier makes sense. I know nine AM might be kind of hard. Um, but that's my personal is Monday or Tuesday at four PM, but Tuesday might be better, so.
If I can make a quick statement?
Sure.
Thank you. Again, I just want to be fully transparent with other commitments that I have. That's why I'm making this statement. I'm currently enrolled in a doctorate program at San Jose State University, and we meet Tuesdays, Thursdays, sometimes Saturdays, but it's from four thirty to eight thirty. So I'm not trying to make this about me, because I think it's about the public, but I would like to know what the rationale is for moving it from Monday to Tuesday. And I want to put forth the inconvenience that it would cause me for my prior commitments. I want to be fully transparent about that. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Um, I think Councilmember Morales, you had suggested Tuesday, and could you elaborate?
I actually recommended Monday at nine, but we heard from our last meeting that Councilmember Resendez had a contract with his employer, and he would be available after four. So I'm not sure if he says a contract, how he's able to go to San Jose State at four thirty. But regardless, um, m- m- many of us have many engagements that we're sacrificing. Mondays is extremely challenging for many reasons. It's probably the worst day of the week. And so looking at how do we, how do we get closer to fulfilling everybody's obligations Tuesday at four? So we're still meeting with your c- contractual agreement with your employer. For many of us, Tuesdays is a lot better. Um, we're also sacrificing other, other meetings, other obligations. You're not the only one. Um, so that's why I'm recommending Tuesday at four o'clock.
If I can just point out some clarity in that respect, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
We zoom in on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Zoom in?
Yeah, Saturday's in person.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So um, one of my concerns about doing a nine AM start is, yes, you 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 don't inconvenience all of the department heads because they're not out until ten o'clock at night on Mondays. But by having a council meeting that runs all day, whether it be any day of the week, um, we're losing twenty percent of their availability to do their other work when they're sitting here. And so for me, that's my concern. But if if we want to do Tuesdays at nine AM, I'm fine with that too. Wha- whatever it is, because um I just want to move on with this. I and and I do believe people can attend the meeting if they choose to, whether it be in person or by, you know, telecommunications, Zoom and or or YouTube. Um, and they'll be there if they want to be there. And so whatever the will of the council is, I would just like to move beyond this. And the bottom line is, if we try it and it doesn't work, we have the opportunity to switch it. But, you know, I too was an advocate for a four PM start because of Councilmember Resendez's contractual obligations. But it doesn't seem like there's a a a compromise that can be obtained here. And so for me, i- if it takes four of us to go one direction and one to vote no, I'm fine with that. But it has absolutely nothing to do with trying to quiet uh the participation of this community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm hearing several folks mentioning nine AM start. Is that something that, what's the will, your willing?
I make a motion that we uh we adopt Tuesday at nine AM. Let's do it.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed?
I'm a no.
Okay, motion carries four to one.
So.
So that's a change then, we have to come back.
Yeah, to be clear, with that was an introduction um with the Monday at four time. We'll bring it back for another introduction at the next meeting, but I also think, did you have? Oh, okay, got it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to council business. Um, item one, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, resolution of the City Council of City Hollister approving the City of Hollister twenty twenty-three general plan progress report. We have a staff report?
Okay, Ms. Kelly, would you, are you gonna be providing the staff report?
I can relate.
Thank you, sorry about that. Um, this item is a resolution for the City Council to review, approve the general plan progress report. Uh, annually, the City of Hollister and all other jurisdictions are required to present and prepare a report on the general plan as well as the housing element, which is a part of the general plan, and have that report reviewed by their city council, and then ultimately that report is submitted to the state, both the Office of Housing and Community Development, as well as the Office of Planning and Research. So I'm here to answer any questions on the report. It was included as an attachment. And and pending the council's approval of the report, I will submit it to the state offices.
Do we have any questions, Councilmember Resendez? Councilmember Burns?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
That's my turn.
Questions?
Uh, none.
No, no questions? Okay, um, let's see. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, our first speaker is Jeffrey Small.
Well, thank you very much for having me tonight, Honorable Mayor, Council, Jeffrey Small. I'm here representing the San Manito High School District. First and foremost, um, we really want to thank you uh for including the high school district in in supporting the delivery of a second high school for the school district. It's of critical importance. Uh, we appreciate working with staff and and working with your council. We made great strides in twenty twenty-three towards delivering the second high school. Twenty-four will be a critical year. Uh, we very much look forward to continuing to work together uh and continuing to have your support. So I just wanted to thank you very much for including uh the high school district in in the annual report for the work that happened in twenty-three and let you know that we look forward to working with you um in twenty twenty-four. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And those are all the public comments we have for this item.
Okay, do we have any further deliberation or discussion on this item? Any? No? Nope. All right, uh, could I get a motion?
Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, good, good job. Motion to approve, please. Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Hi. Did you, all right, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if it's information or not. I'm an I.
That's, sorry, I thought I heard you. All right, item two, receive presentation on installing dogway stations in Sunny Slope Village along Beverly Drive and provide staff possible direction. A staff report? Yes.
Um, good evening, Mayor Casey and City Council, Tina Garza, interim Parks and Recreation Director. Um, this presentation discusses the installation of the six, of six dogway stations along Beverly Drive in Sunny Slope Village. Um, staff explored some specific locations for these stations and prioritized safety for maintenance personnel. Um, the location includes, do I have a, the first location would include, am I? Did I? Thank you. The first location is um Hillcrest. Oh, that's backwards. Um, but it includes Hillcrest Road and Beverly Drive. And then the second location is Beverly Drive and Glarner Street. Uh, the third location would be the corner of Spruce Street and Beverly Drive. Another location would be along um Burlwood Drive and Beverly Drive, and then Cypress Street and Beverly Drive, and then Sunny Slo- and the corner of Sunny Slope Road and Beverly Dr- Road, Drive, sorry. Um, the project expenditure for this fiscal year would be seven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, and that covers staff time, the purchase of the equipment, and installation. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the estimated cost pending council approval uh would be not to exceed eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. And that would include with, um, I'm sorry, with a three percent CPI inflator for subsequent years. And staff requests the City Council to provide a direction on this project.
Okay, any questions, Councilmember Resendez? No, anything, Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, thanks for doing this. I appreciate it. I have a lot of people in Sunny Slope that have reached out to me expressing an interest in this. My, I guess my only question is, I I appreciate the focus on Beverly specifically, but often when I'm out there, I I I tend to walk that area when I'm feeling well. And um what it really doesn't do though is it doesn't deal with people walking their dogs um down Fairview or um up or down uh Hillcrest or Sunny Slope. And I'm wondering if maybe a greater um placement of them, for exam, I I I don't know distance-wise, and I don't have a dog, so um I I'm just thinking, I I like the idea of six. I just think maybe to spread them out more around might be more helpful. And then I also, as I recall, there's at least one or two doggy stations at the park as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We have two. Um, they're mainly in the front of the park near the play structure.
Right, and and so I also know that there's a uh, there are two access points to the park off of the two side streets that would be south, I'm sorry, uh, west, west, west on both north and south, uh, kind of where it was once upon a time fenced off where the cul-de-sacs are back there. And and for some reason, I thought I saw one at one of those sites or one of those entry points as well, but but I like the idea. Thank you for doing it. I'm just thinking maybe uh not necessarily more, but greater distance between them uh would be my only question on. I don't know what the rationale was. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Perez, do you have any questions? Councilmember Morales, any questions? So I I just wanted to repeat what you said about costs. So the initial cost, I missed that. What was it again, the initial cost to install these?
The overall cost, so it'd be purchase the equipment, um, staff time and installation is seven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
You said going forward to maintain it was like eleven thousand?
Um, in in regards to our for, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we would, staff would budget for eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may just chime in on that, um, there, one of the reasons we wanted to also chat and and just show on this is because there is an ongoing cost associated with it, and so we wanted to give the full picture of the ongoing costs so we could have that discussion as well. Um, oftentimes, the um discretionary requests have been one time in nature, and this is one time with an ongoing, so we wanted to to have that discussion as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, so you're talking about the doggy stations, but are we talking about waste receptacle there as well, like a trash can?
Yes.
Would have to be maintained, so how often would that be, like, picked up and that kind of thing?
We have some similar equipment at our dog park, um, the one by the airport, and we maintain that three days out of the week, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
So three days a week, we'd have to have people out there?
That's, that's what it was budgeted for.
All right, and is this being done at any other streets in our city right now?
We only have our dogway stations in our parks.
So just at the parks? Do we have them at all the parks?
Not at all of our parks, but that is our goal to um have them in our parks.
Okay. And um, just out of the blue, I I, the chief isn't here, but do we know, are there laws in place about leaving animal waste on the sidewalks and public spaces, and do we ever enforce that?
There is loss. Animal control, um, people have to call, and normally they provide education or warnings for.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
There's also an impact on the storm water system as well. When waste isn't picked up, it'll often get washed down and go through the storm water system.
That's all the questions I have. Do, okay.
Um, thanks, Tina, for the information. How many dogway stations do we have all over the the parks, would you say? Because I figure, I'm adding up, I figure like twenty-six.
All in our different parks?
Yeah.
I'll go with your number. Twenty-six. But I can get a better um.
No, you know what? It's 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 an issue that really needs to be addressed here in our city, and it's how do we do this really economically? Um, because it's like, I see downtown where people are just, are actually just walking their dogs and not letting their dogs even stop to go to the bathroom. You know, we need, I'd like to see a um some type of service or something we can do when um there's stuff like that on on our main streets or that we can call and have them clean it up or do something. I know it's really um, oh, this is questions.
It's just questions right now. So do we have any, uh, you didn't have any questions, did you, Councilmember Morales? Do we have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay, so let's bring it back for discussion. Do you have any further thoughts, Councilmember? How about you, Councilmember Burns?
I I do. Um, I'm more than happy to um use my discretionary funds to at least do this on a pilot. I, you know, I recognize my term is good for about another calendar year, and so um a lot of the hard costs are just in the equipment and the installation, and so once it's there, but but then I also think that over the course of the year I remain on council, I'm I'm not opposed to the discretionary funds for the maintenance eleven thousand dollar piece as well. And and I think it would serve to really look at potential use of like circumstance in other areas of the, of the city, and and we get a flavor for it. Maybe, maybe it needs to be picked up five times a week. Maybe it only needs to be picked up once a week, but but certainly, um, as we know, we'll know. And um so if if it gives council any uh comfort, I'm I'm more than happy to uh use some of my discretionary funds to uh push this forward. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Perez, thoughts?
Yeah, I would just, I would like to see some type of other uh addition to putting out any receptacles. Um, like I said, it is an issue that needs to be addressed. Um, and it's probably not just. not just over there. It's probably, I see at a Dunn Park. And sometimes it's dogs. But, yeah. But it's, I, I go around all the parks because I ride my electric bike or take the dogs or whatever. And it's, it's, now that I think about it, it's maybe around our parks or getting some information or it's input from some of the city staff while they're out there to see where the major area, where does everyone walk their dogs, concentrate in those areas. But thank you.
Councilmember Morales, any thoughts?
No, I mean, I, I think we all know that there's, there's issues. We see it, you know, the residents creating fences and, you know, you see the issue. I'm wondering, and no, I, I appreciate Councilmember Burns' willingness to resolve the issue, but I think the issue is bigger than just, you know, his district. I think it's an issue citywide. How do we tackle this issue on a, on that level? Because, you know, on Lad Lane, we, we have that issue and people put signs, people now have dog poop picking up services. So how do we address this in a way that, you know, we can measure it and evaluate its effectiveness, whether it's putting the, those stations or having a service or something else? But I think it's bigger than just Councilmember Burns' district.
So if I may, if, if it is the ultimate will of the council to look at something at a higher level and, and a more citywide, it may be something we want to look at during the budget process as depending on how big we go, what that route looks like, that could be someone practically cruising around most a day, you know, attending to these sites. So I would just want to be mindful of that. So.
Thank you. So I do understand the point of view, and I don't mean to be Debbie Downer here, but we're talking about one street and $11,000 a year. And trust me, if one street gets these, there's going to be a lot of requests across the city. And so how much are we willing to invest? And are we going to turn other people away and just say, no, only Beverly or Hillcrest or Fairview, whatever it is, gets it? That's concerning to me because I don't know how much we can really allot to this. We've got so many needs in the city at the city level, things that we can't maintain now. So I just, I worry about that. But I do understand the need. I would totally support the idea of making sure we have at least a couple at every park because people do tend to walk their dogs around the parks. I can tell you, I live off of Lad Lane as well and also Sunset, and I, we, my husband and I have actually observed people who actually bring their little doggy bags and fill them up and then toss them into the weeds. So they don't, or into the bushes there a lot. And I just don't know that you're going to get those people to go walk back, if their dog is doing something, to go get one of those and then come back and get it and then go, I just don't know it's going to solve the problem. That's my concern is that you got the ones that are responsible and the ones that just sort of let things happen. So I, I'm not sure it's going to solve our bigger issue. And I think maybe it needs more attention, you know, to look at it citywide as opposed to one neighborhood. But I could totally support it, making sure we have it at every park because that makes sense to me. Anyways, that's my thoughts.
So, so Mayor, again, I want to point out that this is something I'm willing to underwrite through my, my discretionary money. And again, we don't have great data from what I can tell. And so as I said earlier, this could be a pilot program to run it for some time to get the data to really understand what the needs really are. And, and frankly, if we had 20 streets here, well, you know, we all have discretionary money. And so it's a matter of what our priorities are as elected officials. And in this particular case, it just happens to be in my district. And so I've been pretty diligent with public safety for the primary use of my discretionary funds since I've been on council. And candidly, I see this as public safety as well. It's just a different level. And I, I think it was you that absolutely hit on the fact that, you know, maybe some public education and awareness is the fire, or the police captain mentioned. But, but again, I think we need the data and I think that this would be a great pilot program to do it. If it, again, it's my discretionary money that I'm willing to put forward. And I, I think that there would be value for it citywide, even though it's my district. And so I would, I'd advocate that. Or if the council still has concerns about the $11,000, maybe you reduce the number from six to three on just Beverly to get a, get a, a broader idea. And I'm assuming you're going to reduce your overhead by about half if you cut it by half. So just my two cents, and I would appreciate the council's support on this. Thank you.
Any other thoughts from anyone? Yes, Councilmember Resendas?
Hi, I apologize if this has been asked. Do the dispensaries also have waste baskets?
Yes. It's part of, of the whole unit. On top is where you pull the doggy bags and on the bottom, it's like a waste basket.
Okay. And then I think the, the city manager alluded to it, but who's responsible for, for maintaining those? Both refilling the bags and taking the waste?
It would be our city staff, our, through our Parks Division.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's see. Are we giving direction or are we making a motion?
Direction. Please provide direction.
So what, what direction do we want to give here?
If I can, I'll state my position.
Sure.
Personally, I'm fine with just piloting this area. But again, I'd like to see how well we do with maintaining them, how well received it is by the public. I'm assuming it's going to be well received. But I don't know if I'm at this point really want to go further than that. And if anything, I'd like to see what other cities are doing as well. But I do think that a lack of education for sure for dog owners is, is something that we can definitely focus in on.
Yes, please.
Apologize, I just have to leave. I'd be willing to support Councilmember Burns, whether if he wants all of them or, or half of them. It's discretionary money. We do need data. This is a sore point for our residents. And maybe report back with other options, whether it's a dog pickup service or anything else that we find to be effective and useful. But I, I'd support Councilmember Burns and whatever he decides to move forward.
Councilmember Perez, you have anything to add, or you?
No. Well, yes. First of all, thank you. I appreciate the council's support in this matter. I do think there is a value to it city, citywide. And, and again, I will trust in staff's judgment whether six on Beverly makes more sense or, you know, spread them out across up and down Sunny Slope, Hillcrest, maybe two on, two on each or, I, I don't know. I don't know where the problem is. I'm not out there when I'm walking looking for dog poop, except when it's on the sidewalk and then I react. So, so I'll trust in staff's judgment. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez, anything to add? You supportive?
No, I'll support Tim Burns and anything in direction, whether to pay off his discretionary or in, in the number two. Actually, I would say only three. I know personally, I don't like carrying a bag for long, but, or at least down to four. That's, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, so I've expressed my reservations. But as a pilot program and because you're willing to pony up your funds, I think it's worth doing, I think it's worth leaving the six stations though, because it needs to be convenient and easily accessible. But I definitely want data. We could try it for a year and see. And just anybody who asks, it's a pilot program. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen all over the city. But no, I definitely think we should, we should give it a try. And as long as we can collect data on, is it working? You know, how, how difficult it is, you know, what, you know, how is it, how is it working out after a year? Then we can bring it back and decide what to do on a bigger level.
So if you're going to use discretionary funds, then an item would be brought back at the next council meeting?
Okay.
And if, if I'm hearing clearly with consensus, we're staying with the model as proposed?
Yes. I think it's make it easy. Make it easy for him to use it. So, all right. Next, item three, discussion and direction regarding agenda review process. City manager, was that you?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
Mayor and council, so it was previously requested by a majority of council that an agenda item be brought forward to consider mayoral review of draft council meeting agendas before they're brought to council. We recommend, my, my office recommends that should council give that direction, that clear guidelines be established for staff because currently it takes a majority to place an item on an agenda. So if there's authority to move items around or wait on items, pull items, so that staff's not in the middle of politics, that there be a clear set of rules.
And just for clarification purposes, when I, I'm the one who brought this up and I specifically did say not requesting any kind of authority to remove any items or push them off, the whole intent was to have another set of eyes on the agenda in case something's missed. We have had a couple of times when items didn't get back on at the next meeting. And also just the idea of, of going over it with the, the city manager who makes the final call on the agenda. And if it looks like there's going to be a lot and we're trying to get done with a 10 o'clock hard stop, being able to give the eyes and say, hey, this may have, you know, maybe a lot longer items. That's the idea. It's not to dictate what gets on the agenda or off the agenda. I would just make observations and let you make final decisions on things. That's my only intent. So, just to be clear. So do we have questions then, Councilmember Resendas? Do you have any questions, Councilmember Burns?
No, thank you.
No? All right. Do we have any public comment on this?
We have no public comment for these item, for this item.
All right. Any further discussion?
Sure. Yeah, so I'm, I'm not in agreement with this at all. I think that it sets a dangerous precedent. As was just stated, politics are at play always. And if we say something here publicly, it doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we're really going to do. So if that were to happen, then everybody up here should have the same opportunity, not just one person. So those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I, I'm going to support this because I really appreciate all the effort that goes into an agenda. The advanced thought, I think, is critical. I like the idea of having a second set of eyes on it as it moves forward because there have been many nights where things on the agenda were very technical and they often found their way to the end of the agenda, which is like my number one disdain. Because if it's technical, I want to hear it earlier in the meeting. Now, I'm somewhat comforted by the fact that we're going to move the council meetings to Tuesday at 9:00 AM. So I'm, I'm reasonably hopeful that we won't be doing the 10:00 PM-er. But we also heard it play out tonight where I still think that council members have the opportunity from the dais to question how things evolve on the agenda and when things are pulled. Councilmember Resendas, well within his right to do so, did so tonight, and he got to the bottom of it based on the, the person being present and explaining it. So I, I like the, I like the checks and balances. I, I'm a strong advocate for trust but verify. And so I get the concern, but I don't believe that concerns are going to be a problem. And so I'm, I'm more than happy to support this with clear direction from council so that it doesn't become a politicized agenda because that's absolutely what it should not become. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
So I would never even think that you would try to influence anything. But what it does do, it gives an impression of that. And that's why I cannot support this. I, I think you're the best mayor we've had, probably, I don't know, since I've been around. But of course, we can wait for Tim Burns until next year. But no, I, I just think that checks and balances, we give him a check to balance everything. And if he doesn't do it, then get on him. Get on him. I, I can't support this.
Okay. Well, I disagree, only because I believe the city manager goes to every single department to get input from them for a meeting, which is our council meeting. And oftentimes, we don't see until well after it's published. So if there's a mistake or something isn't there, we have no input. So it's not about trying to control, as I said, and I'd be willing to have something in writing that says the mayor doesn't have any control over moving an item, but simply to give you, you know, okay, there's, you know, three items that are really complex. This is going to go after whatever our timing, you know. And, and the other thing is if, if something is missing, so that we don't, you know, it is a, it's, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's added to our agenda. We have things waiting, right, for months to get on the agenda. So it's just having another set of eyes. And that's just how I feel about it. And my understanding was the former mayor did actually have some input. And I'm not asking for that level of input. I just would like to be part of the process before it's finalized. So anyways, that's my thoughts.
The, the other part about that is, since you brought up previous mayor and how that didn't work out too well, but the, we don't know what the future mayor is. So you know what? I, that's why I, I can't go for this. I think, we have to trust our staff. I, I trust you guys, even though I voted against you. Sorry. Anyways, you know what? I trust staff. And it's, and most of the time, I'm going to go with them unless it's a little French area that you can go through. That's it.
All right. So I think we're kind of tied. So it's unfortunate that Councilmember Morales left so we couldn't have a 3-2 of some kind. But let's move on then. So that was item three? Yeah, we don't have consensus, so. All right. So we're going to go to the City of Hollister Successor Housing Agency of the Redevelopment Agency. So we have an annual report on the Hollister Successor Agency Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund for fiscal year 2022, 23.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you may remember, or not, but stated in the staff report, back in 2012, all state redevelopment agencies were dissolved. So at that time, city jurisdictions and county jurisdictions had the option to opt in to be a successor agency to manage the funds, to manage any projects and items moving forward. And so this is a requirement as we are a successor to the redevelopment agency, to be able to submit a fund balance and a summary of what actions have occurred. This report is actually also attached to the general.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to our informational reports, committee assignments. Councilmember Burns, do you have anything?
Regrettably, I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez, any meeting, meeting info?
Nothing to report.
Nothing? Okay. I have a few, so I'm going to try to shorten up so we can get out of here in a decent hour. So we had a hospital ad hoc meeting and it was actually convened at my request. I wasn't really very happy. The council had, the county had canceled our January ad hoc meeting and didn't really notify the cities about its intention to move forward with a town hall meeting to present their proposal about a JPA directly to the public. We just, I guess the city just basically got a flyer saying, would you please share this? So I was concerned and asked for a meeting. And so during the meeting, I emphasized some of my concern that, that the way the flyer read and the things that I was hearing was being presented to the public as the solution for the hospital situation. And I had a concern about swaying public opinion in that direction when there's three other proposals being considered. So I had requested of Supervisor Kuro, who was emceeing the town hall, that she indicate that this is just one of four proposals being considered and that there will likely be more town halls from the other potential partners in the near future and that they all deserve equal consideration. And she did a great job at the town hall and the consultants shared their proposal. And some more detail has been added from what we've listened, what, what we heard at the last presentation from the county by a consultant. And I don't know how much detail you even want as to what the new proposal is. I believe the town hall was recorded, but there are some further developments. We had, when it was presented to us, Salinas Valley Memorial was proposed to be a part of the JPA and be managing the hospital. They've since pulled out and they're, the consultants have not identified any replacement for them as yet. Financing is an area of concern and that's been made, that was something we had all talked about. And it's been made a little clearer. County's proposing to put up $5 million from their reserves. And then it looks like they're going to rely on some borrowing lines of credit, tax credits and a 10, the $10 million distressed hospital loan that would provide additional capital between 17 and 20 million. They are believing that the distressed hospital loan is going to be forgiven, but it's not really a given considering the financial predicament of the state. So that's. the financial predicament of the state, so that's kind of up in the air, um, their goal and the way they see the hospital growing is they want to build a physicians group and bring 25 to 30 new physicians to the county, and they think that this group will help the hospital to grow and become more financially stable, there's questions about, the, there were questions from the public about difficulty in attracting the physicians here and how they would do it, and they indicated using various financial incentives, and they talked about a 10-year timeline to build out this group, so that's kind of where they're at, I feel like there's still key pieces missing, um, but, um, I think, as they said, it, the plan keeps, is still very fluid and changing, and so we're likely to see more from them, um, and that's all I have to report about the, the town hall. On Friday, we had a COG workshop and strategic planning session that was led by a wonderful facilitator, and our new legal counsel is, was there, and we had a great discussion on the Brown Act, and it answered a lot of questions, um, and we worked on our mission vision and talked about goals for the year, there's new staff there, there's a lot of new energy, and we're heading in a really good direction, so I was really happy with that, um, we had an economic development ad hoc meeting, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Burns, that you weren't able to be there, but I could brief you on it later, but we just, um, basically, it was a follow-up to the initial parklet meeting that was held by staff, um, where they had indicated wanting to have more, uh, conversation, and so we, we reinstituted the ad hoc to kind of, uh, answer that, and so we had not as many people show up for this, but several of the parklet owners were there, and had some good discussion, um, about what was working, what wasn't, and, uh, we'd like to do more engagement with the non-parklet business owners to kind of feel from them what is working and what isn't, and also even engage the residents to really s- see, since the streets actually belong to the community, you know, how they're feeling about things, just to kind of get an overall picture, and then maybe even do a survey, um, from the community as well to get more info, because we want to, we, you know, the direction from council was to try to work on transition, transitioning this to a more permanent program from the pilot program, so that's kind of where we're at with that, and I also went to a, um, special evening with the First Five Resiliency Network and the Collaboratory Committee that I sit on, we had a listening session, dinner, and discussion about the new community center that they want to build, um, talking about different programming to support families and seniors, it was kind of a kickoff event, and there's going to be a capital campaign coming, so more, more to come about that, and then, um, I attended a couple of ribbon cuttings, one was for the commercial kitchen at the Resiliency Network Family Center, the kitchen is going to help support programs and provide, you know, food for families, um, and I also attended the Jama Juice ribbon, ribbon cutting, and it was kind of exciting to see there was just a line out the door, and I understand they've been really busy since they opened, so that's, that's good to hear, anyways, that's all meetings, alright, so, do we have any other council reports, Councilmember Resendez, you have anything to report?
Thank you, um, as was stated by the public speaker, Ms., Ms., uh, Ruth Erickson, I did speak to her, and she, um, actually informed me of the issue and educated me quite a bit, had a conversation with the city manager, I gave the packet over to the city clerk if she can make copies and distribute it to the city council, and if she thinks it's appropriate, we can make it part of the record either now, or if the council will entertain me in bringing that back, um, to a future agenda item, essentially, what I'm hearing from Ms. Erickson, and her concern, I think is pretty valid, is that they want to get rid of all the landlines, and you can see how that could be concerning, especially to one of the senior citizens in our community, who has probably had a, I'm, I'm assuming, a, a landline for quite a while, so, I'm hearing, after talking to city manager and her, and getting a little more educated on it, this is a huge concern, and, um, it's a hot topic at the California League, so I would ask my, um, colleagues to get on board, and let's support our senior citizens, and tell them, please do not take away the community's landlines, um, that's that, I also wanted to thank, uh, Public Works staff, um, just again, like always, every time it's raining out there, I think of you guys, because I know that you're out there, uh, especially when the winds are so heavy and it's raining, and there's all this debris everywhere, so I just want to thank you publicly for all of the work that you're doing out there for our community, keep us nice and safe, um, I also wanted to, again, I should have probably just, I, I keep forgetting to ask you this, but the, I don't even know what to call them, on Sally Street, those black bumpers around the roundabouts, the one, I've mentioned this several times, the one going into Sally Street, it's just been a mess, I'm wondering who maintains that, can we maintain them? Even like the weeds around it, and so Sally Street, but even worse, Central Avenue, is pretty, is pretty beat up, and so if we can look at, um, and this doesn't have to come back to the council, but who's maintaining those, let's get those looked at, and if one of those things is, is, um, is broken, let's fix it as soon as we can, and then, lastly, tomorrow's, uh, election day, so I just wanted to remind everybody to get out and vote, it's very important, and then just, um, thank everybody that put their name in the race, so to speak, it takes a lot of effort, uh, it's a lot of work, and I'm happy to see the election season come to an end, and I wish everybody luck, and, um, please, I'm pretty disappointed that our committee has such a low voter turnout, I think it's not just us, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to put that reminder out there, get out there and vote, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, mayor, so, I want to echo, uh, what Councilmember Resendez just said about please go out and vote, um, your vote on a local level makes a huge difference, and you can't impact change if you don't have the people in place to make the change, so please go out and vote, I just turned mine in at, uh, the firehouse, uh, number two, this evening on the way in, so you still have time, but it's not much, so, um, I, I too would support, uh, city, uh, writing a letter or, or taking even a more vocal point on, uh, eliminating landlines or hardwired phones in homes, uh, makes a lot of sense, I actually have one, don't know what the number is, but it's, it's there as a backup in the event, and, uh, usually I just get a lot of, uh, solicitor calls on it, but I, I think there's still value in it, so, um, wanted to take a moment and ask everybody to just, uh, look up and look around when you're driving in and around our community, uh, look at those beautiful green hills, I mean, we are seeing the benefits of why we live here, and, and for me, this is about my favorite time of the year, just because it is stunning looking at the surrounding valley and, and the snow capped mountains occasionally, I mean, we're here, we saw it earlier tonight, uh, of the true sense of community, that the community was recognized for their heroic efforts and for just being a strong, uh, neighborhood community, and so, appreciate what we have, because not everybody has it, and I think we often take it for granted, and then the last thing I wanted to ask is, um, I'd like clarity, is the motorcycle rally dead, because we're into March, and so, um, we're into what I would consider the critical timeframe to move things forward, and if, you know, if, if Miami, Florida can do, uh, the, uh, what do they call it, the spring break, and I see that there's a lot of refinements going on to make those safer events, um, I'm not convinced there's not a way for us to get to a motorcycle rally this year, but, uh, I'm thinking time is of the essence, and so, uh, those are my comments, uh, again, thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Perez, any comments?
We're going for records tonight, well, so, I agree with Councilman Resendez, I agree with Councilman Burns, I agree with you, Mia, yeah, I did want to read this, for, this is, um, from Dolores, she had to leave early, to declare March Women's History Month, and declare March 8th as Women's International Day.
March 8th.
March 8th, so if we can get some support for Dolores on that, I support her, um, um, Bulldog Boxing, they came up and were asking for some help financially, um, the young men came tonight, and they didn't fill out a yellow form, um, I know their situation, and I would like to, I don't know what the correct word is, pass on some money for their tournament and to get them to, uh, to where they need to be, um, if I can get support for that, that's 8,500, to come out of my discretionary, speaking of discretionary, it seems like we're, this is the first time I've ever said, uh, spent anything out of my discretionary, because I'm not sure how I feel about this, I really don't, I, Bulldog man, I go over there and you see 40 kids over there a day, they need help, um, um, but, should, I, I don't know, maybe we should have a process or some, some type of procedure we go through when, once a year, taking care of all these nonprofits and stuff like that to, to, so that way we can add it into our budget, and instead of, I mean, I, I know discretionary is already there, but it just seems like, I don't know, it's like now I know that all kinds of nonprofits are going to hit me up, and you know, that's not fair to say no, yes, and no, but anyways, that's just all I have to say on that.
Okay, um, I support the AT&amp;T letter, I think we should do a letter, uh, against removing landlines, and March 8th as International Women's Day, and proclaiming March as Women's His- History Month, and, um, I support your request for, for funds for Bulldog Boxing, so. Anything further, did you have anything to report? Sure, you want to go through?
Okay, so I heard consensus on the AT&amp;T landline, the letter of opposition, we can put that together and get that sent in, um, as for, uh, Vice Mayor Resendez's, uh, question about Sally and Central Avenue, that is our responsibility, so I'll discuss that with the Public Works going in, and then where dirt settles, weeds start to grow, and I think we're starting to see weeds in some of the nooks and crannies with some of the traffic calming devices, so we'll take a look at that, um, we will be bringing an item back, um, in the next few meetings probably, uh, or in the next few meetings on the, on the rally and provide an update on that, um, declaring the two items for, um, March, um, I, I saw, okay, uh, Bulldog Boxing, 8,500 discretionary funds, tournament, um, and then Councilmember Perez's request to look at a process for nonprofits requesting funds, uh, through the budgeting process or an annual process to request funding.
I, I thought we already had a process, we don't have a process, I thought, I thought we did, um, which was to bring it up during our council member comments, and then gain the consensus, I get, I get Councilmember Perez's concern, but if, 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 maybe, do we, remind me, do we already, I, I, I thought we have a process too, knowing we're going into mid-year budget conversations, seems to me like we've allocated money for not, what we, we did tonight, we just gave 20 grand to the Leadership Foundation, and so I feel like we have that process already, and if so, I, I don't see if there's a greater need, um, but, you know, I'm, I'm open, I just don't know that there's a need.
Yeah, I think what I heard was an annual process rather than all throughout the year.
Maybe what we have is adequate enough, I just, I don't know, to me, it's a whole real gray area.
Right, see, see, part of the challenge, though, as I see that, is, um, well, number one, I, I, I assume Bulldog.
Madam mayor, I feel like we're having a discussion about it now.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting into a discussion, but I think the city manager is actually going to be bringing back a proposal at budget.
Yeah, we can, we can look at how we look at that at budget, um, because what I'm hearing is, is, you know, throughout the year versus once a year, so, we, we can look at that at, at budget time.
That's true.
And then I believe Mayor Casey, all three of the items you mentioned were covered and have consensus, which were the March items, Bulldog, and the AT&amp;T line.
So is that it? You may not have any other?
That is it on that part.
No other reports from anyone?
Yes, um, I'll pass it over to our city clerk.
Mayor Casey and council, we do have a request from the American Legion Auxiliary to have a proclamation, this is one that we've done before, for National Poppy Month, um, and so, wondering if you, we have consensus to bring this back at the next meeting, so, okay, actually, sorry, it's going to be at the last meeting in April, because it's for the month of May, read my notes, thank you.
Thank you, alright, then if there's no other reports, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero, meeting is now adjourned.